Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It is on or around 7:07 PM this evening on Monday, October 28th, 2019. We have a nice audience here this evening. Thank you for being here. Tonight is committee night. We will begin with Committee of the Whole. President Nysli is our acting mayor this evening and I am the acting president pro tem. So bear with us. Thank you, everyone. Our first committee this evening is Committee of the Whole and we have our annual report from the Commission on Disabilities. I believe that Mr. David McNelly is the chair and will present with us and he is accompanied by a few other folks. Thank you.
Sure. And we have a PowerPoint prepared which I'm going to scroll through. Here we go. Yes, my name is Davy McNelly. I'm the current acting chair of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. With me today are Dr. Carolyn Lewis and Mr. Noah Tremblay as well. And we're pleased to be able to present some of our work and some of our committee work and how other people can be involved tonight. So to start off with, we have 11 members of our commission. We currently have three vacancies, which we are in the process of filling. We have full meetings for the whole commission. Once a month, it's the third Wednesday of every month at the community center at 5:30. And we also have committee meetings once a month at various locations, which we publicize. And it's really where our committee meetings, where the work gets done. Some of the things that we are tasked to do, which are in our bylaws, are to make recommendations to the city of Athens on city services and the needs of people with disabilities. We act as liaison between members of the community and local government. And we really just try and support people with disabilities and let people in the city know what's needed. So we try and be a representative voice of people. I'd like to take a quick moment to acknowledge other people who are on either a committee or involved with the commission. If everyone could kind of like either stand up or wave your hand or something like that, Scott and Diane and Rob. So we have quite a few people who are involved, so I just want to acknowledge and thank them for their work as well. Some of the key changes this year, like I said, we really have focused on getting our main work done in committees so that we don't meet as a full commission and try and like go through some of the nuts and bolts. We have an executive committee made up of the four members of our executive team. We also have an accessibility committee, which works on accessibility. Noah's going to tell you about that. We have advocacy, advocacy communications and education outreach and Dr. Carolyn Lewis will tell you about that. We keep our committee meetings to an hour. We have just, you know, a couple dozen people who are involved outside of our commission membership, which has really expanded our reach and expanded the work we've been able to get done, which we're really excited about. And we invite you to attend. Mr. McGee comes to our meetings as the city council representative and it's been great to have him, but I'd encourage everyone to attend, kind of find out what's going on in terms of disabilities in the community.
Having said that, what night and what time?
It is Wednesday nights, every Wednesday. I don't think we're going to have one in December. We typically don't, but the third Wednesday of every month at the community center at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
Yeah, we always stick to that. So our next meeting will be in January. So some of our key changes in terms of our full commission is we have discontinued some of the antiquated things that we used to do, which was challenged by choice. That's not really something that the disability community likes. It's something, you know, it's like a way to take on a disability for a day, but it doesn't really like show someone what it's like to have a disability. We continue to collaborate with OU. We recently worked with Arts West and the purchase of a wheelchair accessible ramp so that it's become more accessible. We submitted a parking study grant to the Athens Foundation and worked a lot with city officials on streetscaping and thinking ahead towards other projects. One thing that we want to talk more about, and we'll talk with the mayor and some of the other city representatives, is using CitySource and making reports about things that are inaccessible in the city. A lot of people have made a lot of reports, so now we want to be able to have a five-year plan and know what we need to get done and how we're going to get it done. So we want to work with city officials on being able to do that. This is Noah.
Good evening, Madam President and the rest of City Council. The Accessibility Committee has been very busy. First, I'll give an update on the uptown audits we've been doing. We haven't done very many new ones this year, but I'm proud to report that CASA took our work very serious. They did most of the low-hanging fruit that we pointed out, which includes installing a doorbell on the accessible entrance, making pathways wider, and they got real menace. We plan to get back to doing some more audits than we need to follow up with a couple of businesses that we already worked with. After years of talking about how Athens needs an accessible parking study done, we formally put together what the scope of that project needed to look like and sent it out to bid. The winning bid banded two local consulting firms that partnered up on this project, Street Keys and Noah Tremblay Enterprises. I might know a little bit about Noah Tremblay Enterprises somehow. Anyway, while we were still developing the scope of the project, we also started looking into funding options. A couple of different city departments said they could possibly chip in if we found some outside funding as a base. A member of the committee heard that the Athens Foundation were accepting grant proposals for projects that would benefit people living with disabilities. We found out that we did make the qualifications to apply. A few of us worked on the proposal, but I would like to give a big thanks to Carolyn Lewis and Diane Bouvier for really pulling it off and getting the application in on time. We also got letters of support from a variety of local agencies. We'll find out if we got the grant mid-November. My time is about up and I have so much more that I could talk about. We've also working with different city officials on up and coming projects that the city has planned. We've seen small errors on projects that were recently completed. I'm out of time. Thank you and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you.
The Education Outreach Committee, and we're also the 2019 Athena Awards Committee. We have three goals: to increase awareness, to seek opportunities to educate the community, and to recognize individuals and organizations or agencies with the Athena Award for outstanding service on behalf of people with disabilities. We expanded our committee this year. For a while it was Barry and me, and it was some hard work, so we made a concerted effort to expand. And now we have folks from throughout the community with different organizations, different skills, and we have some younger people, which really helps to make our work easy and more interesting. From WUB, from the Commission, of course, from HAPCAP, and from the Nelson York School and community members. And of course, Maxine Rantain is the mayor's designate. We increased awareness this year by talking with civic clubs, by really engaging the media with interviews, by working with the government channel, and features in The Messenger and also The Athens News. We developed some print pieces that we'll give to you when I'm finished, some, a little card of talking points, maybe you can be my banner today by holding those up. The talking points. Also a leave behind card that we can leave with whomever we speak with. Calling All Artists, which is going to be the next Athena II Award, and you'll hear more about that within the coming year. And we developed a comprehensive commission contact list with media outlets, health services, civic clubs, so that we can now pick and choose when we need to contact or contact the entire list. Barry kept saying, "Who are we, who's out there?" So we just sat down one day and decided to do it, and it's really a comprehensive list. So the Athena Award is coming up. We started our publicity in July and now we're at the point of finalizing everything. And we'll be having a technical rehearsal on the sixth, and fifth on the sixth. We will be like the Academy Awards. No one knows right now who the recipient will be, and we will present information on all of them that night to introduce the other nominees because they're all really worthy of the award, but we will announce the one on the sixth. And the Athena Award will come up and we'll tell you more about that. So future projects and issues to address, we're going to be doing an oral history of the commission since this is the 15th year. We talked into folks who have been with the commission even before it was a commission and on. Aging and disability, accessible housing, consulting for new schools, so that when facilities and schools are built, we can have input on how it should be for people with disabilities. And also a workshop for architects and builders with a possible look at a video on how it should be for Athens. Athens is a special place. It's not always like other places, so we want to make sure that what they do is correct for this community. And a reminder for you, the Athena Award ceremony is coming up, as I said, on the sixth, 5:00 to 6:00 PM at Arts West. Reception will follow, and the deadline is tonight, so anyone in the audience or on the council, if you have not responded, tonight is the night. And thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you.
We do have some handouts that Barry will give you. You'll find the card, our talking points, our calling all artists, and what Noah talked about was the CitySource, the way to access it. And Rob is here tonight, who put this all together. Where's Rob, Deely?
Right here.
Okay. Thank you for putting this all together.
Thank you, Ms. McNelly. Thank you, Noah Tremblay, and thank you, Dr. Carolyn Lewis. This is much-needed perspective, and I recently, those of us at council recently met with students from Ohio University, and one of the students also shared concerns and challenges about being a student of the university, dealing with disability. And I texted Scott about that, Scott Thompson, our media coordinator, and acknowledged that the CitySource site has been challenging to access. So it is something that, again, thank you for reiterating that and making that and bringing that to our attention. Comments from council? Thank you.
I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure to work with the commission. You're all inspiring. And I also wanted to mention to the citizens of Athens that there's an incredible opportunity that's coming to Athens on November 14th. One of the, I can honestly say, one of the greatest musicians I've heard, Galen Lea, is going to be performing at Arts West through the Ohio University Series. And if you have not heard of her or not seen her, it's certainly something you don't want to miss, and she is one of the most inspiring people, overcoming a disability and becoming a great musician. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Other comments from council members? Yes, council member?
I just wanted to say thank you for all your work. You guys are one of the inspirational commissions that we like to point to our new commissions and say, "Look at what they've done with all the time and energy that people have put in." So I really like to say thank you. I mean, the city runs by volunteers, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other comments? Also, before we discontinue this committee for the evening, I'll also call on Acting Mayor Nysli if there's anything you'd like to share or add. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the commission for their work, and also you've mentioned the Athena Award. That's now in its fifth year. And I think so often we perhaps get in the habit of making regulations and sometimes they're not always positive, and this is a really positive way to highlight the contributions that people have made in our community. So thank you for working on the award. I know it takes time to review those nominees and to prepare for the presentation, so we're looking forward to being there. And Dr. Lewis, yes?
I think I can say it's the only award presented by the city of Athens.
Yeah, it is special. So we could use to stand that as a model. Perhaps we can do more awards. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we conclude, I want to acknowledge too that it's super important for council to hear reports from our various commissions throughout the community. There's some things that Noah shared with us from the last presentation that stood out to me regarding accessibility. And if we don't hear these conversations, if we don't have this dialogue, then we can't make the changes that are necessary. When I heard that Stimson Avenue was going to be one of the projects to be addressed next, one of the big streetscape projects, one of the first things I acknowledged to Andy Stone, our City Service Safety Director, who at the time was our Public Works Director, was the fact that we have telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalk. If you're able-bodied, great, you can get around there, but that's not the case for everyone. So that's, you know, again, a subtle example of thinking about the needs for everyone in an inclusive community. Thank you. If we have no other further comments or anything else that the commission would like to share this evening?
Yeah, thanks again for having us. We appreciate it.
Moving on to Finance and Personnel Committee. This evening, Councilmember Reisner is here and perhaps for simplicity and brevity's sake, will remain at the dais to move forward. Does that sound okay? So we'll keep, folks can sit up here for Finance and Personnel Committee, but just please don't comment if you're not a part of that committee. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. Finance and Personnel Committee comes to order. We have a few bullet points here. The first one I'm looking at is our Water Labor Supervisor Staffing Amendment. I see Mr. Robert Hetty, our Director of Engineering and Public Works. He was getting settled in. I have an email here from you, or then to, actually from Police Chief, Temporary Service Safety Director Pyle, for a recommendation for a promotion in the water treatment, water maintenance technician to Water Labor Supervisor. Would you care to give us some details on this, Mr. Hetty?
Yes, thank you Chairman Reisner. This position here is for, to promote Brian Dufer from a water maintenance technician who's currently on the water crew to the supervisor of that position. That position was vacated in June by the resignation of the previous supervisor. Brian's a very capable individual. He's got over 10 years of experience. He has Water Distribution License Number Two, which is required for the position, which we will actually allow you to get through the position, but in this case he already has it up front. He also has Sanitary Collection System License One and enough time to take his License Two, which is another requirement, so that he can cover for the water or the sanitary supervisor as well, as well as Backflow Prevention Certification, which is required us to have here in the city to run that process for all health hazard risk connections, may be in a restaurant or other type of facility. What we want to come to the council here for tonight is, we believe based on his qualifications and that he will be able to fill the operator record position for the EPA immediately upon taking this position, we wanted to go and ask for 40% of the pay range, which I believe Article 20 allows to go to the midpoint range for the pay. So we're asking for $28.12 per hour. His current's $23.22 as a member of that crew, and he would step in his next, the next contract to $23.49. By him being the company operator record, it would eliminate the need to pay the water plant manager for that and would save over the course of, course of the year over $4,100. Or also, the budget can support that because we've been without the supervisor since June, and it actually been a lower rate than the previous supervisor.
Okay.
If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be glad to take them.
The person that was in, that was there previously, what was their pay at that, at the point of departure?
$30.87.
So this is what, $2 less?
Yes. So it'd be $5,720 over 2,080 hours a year in savings.
Okay. Auditor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. I just want to correct one thing. Supervisors or someone hiring someone is allowed to go 25% through the grade, not 50, without council approval. However, I talked to our clerk, Debbie Walker, this morning, and we do have a precedent. In the last few years, we've given people 35 and 50% through that for supervisory positions. And it seems like, you know, $5 an hour is a pretty good jump for someone. However, I don't have any issues with this. I believe in hiring from within. I just promoted someone in my office, and I think that you could look at it as if this was someone from the outside who clearly has experience in our actual department and the licenses required. And it's not without precedent to do a 40% increase for someone moving into a supervisory position.
How many years' experience has this gentleman had?
10 in his career. I don't have his actual hire date. He's been with the city for at least four or five years, I believe.
Okay.
He also scored the highest. We redid the civil service exam. This year was a 158-question exam with essay questions, and he scored the highest. I think with his military credit, he was 112%. So did very well out of the group of six that applied for the position and took the exam.
Okay.
And was unanimously recommended by the three-panel hiring committee, which consisted of myself, Assistant Service Safety, or excuse me, myself, Assistant Director of Public Works, and the water crew supervisor, so who would be his direct peer.
Okay, so you'd like to us to have an ordinance for next Monday to begin amending the staffing ordinance to allow this to happen?
I believe that's what's necessary. I believe the ordinance just says they have to have consent. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yes, yes. Council has to approve the increase because it's more than what's allowed in our compensation plan. We wouldn't be amending the staffing ordinance. He's moving into a position that's currently there, right?
Correct.
That we already have in the city. That person has been gone for a few months and, but council has to approve that, much of an increase in the pay.
Okay, I got it. Questions from the committee?
I'll just acknowledge, the clerk is acknowledging that that's the right path. Correct. Thank you. Any questions from committee members? So that would be Councilmember Reisner, Butler Cottes, and I believe Crowe. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
More or less, the four of us.
No comments?
We few, we happy few.
Sounds like the right person for the job. Mr. Dufer.
We agree, and, you know, we're talking with him. He feels that he's about a third of the way through his career, so it's probably commensurate with that. We also, the position allows nine years to get the qualifications that he has, so that will save us, I didn't mention before, but save us. We typically pay for their training as well as their first examination, so that there's large savings there, plus just the benefit of having a supervisor that's got all the qualifications. Well, as soon as he takes his exam for the other license, basically day one, so.
I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Next item, notes. I guess we have to make some payments for waste, for water, the water treatment plan and the wastewater treatment plan improvements. One will be for $50,000, the other will be for $100,000. Roll over on the notes, is that correct?
Yes, yes. One's for the wastewater plant loan and one's for the water treatment plant loan, and the interest rate will be 1.66%. And I have emailed our bond council, and I'm hoping he can prepare the paperwork and we can start it next Monday. If not, it will be two weeks from then, and then we will need it in time to pay our note on December 6th, which is a Friday.
That's going to be tight.
Yeah.
Unless we have a, I guess we could suspend the rule.
Well, if you can start it on Monday, we'll be okay, because then at the end of November 2nd meeting.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's, we're, well, I'm a little bit surprised I even got the interest rate this early, this far out, because the bank doesn't like to commit themselves too far out, so.
Where does this put us on, for payments for the wastewater treatment plant?
Okay, wastewater treatment plant, we owe $220,000. We're paying the $50,000 down on that. The water treatment plant, we owe $250,000, and we're paying $100,000 down on that one. So they'll be, both be under $200,000 each.
Great. Finally getting things paid off.
And a great interest rate, so.
And if I recall correctly, the wastewater treatment plant was millions of dollars.
Well, not this one. The plant, the actual construction, these are engineering loans that we take out to get an estimate for how much it's actually going to cost. We don't know how much to borrow until we've done the engineering and design, and so, but I believe the one for the wastewater plant was $850,000.
For the improvements? Okay, thank you, auditor, for the improvements.
And if you, Madam President?
So if we can start next Monday, if that works out with the bond council to prepare the documents, and you could get the three readings in before it's due with that emergency clause.
Correct.
Because it would have the final reading on it on December 2nd then.
If everything goes well, we can do it. Otherwise, we'll have to have a special session or we'll have to suspend the rule somewhere. Okay. Under appropriations/transfers, I have got some good news that a FEMA grant came into the, for the fire department. Is that correct, auditor?
Yes, we just got the money in our account today. The fire department had applied for a grant and they got it. $42,000, where did I write that? $42,955. And so we got our money back from that. Any FEMA money that we get has to go into the FEMA fund, and then we can move it out of there to go to whatever fund, you know, that we need to put it in for the grant. In this case, we paid for this upfront out of the cap fund. So I would like the appropriation of this money in the FEMA fund and then a transfer Just to replace the money we already spent out of there.
Right.
Okay, yeah. So that was my new one tonight. I just sprung on. I just sprung on Jeff.
How about the old ones?
Yeah. We need an appropriation of $20,000 in the parking garage to get through the end of the year, the TC300s, which is services. And I think, looking at the budgets, we didn't quite budget enough from last year. We added $600,000 into that budget for the improvements that were, have going on. I think we just missed it, adding that on top of all the other basic payments that they needed. So we need $20,000, which the parking garage fund has plenty unappropriated. It's about $250,000. I think it's $249, actually, yes. So there's plenty of money to appropriate. So if we could do $20,000 to get through the end of the year in parking garage. Then I have a transfer in the garbage fund, that one of the solid waste employees needs a new computer, and so there is money in the fund, so we have requested just a transfer rather than a new appropriation. So we need $1,500 from 76636, maybe you don't need all this detail, but 5201, which is the supply line, and then 5537, which is computer equipment. And so we have to have council approval to go from these different transaction classes, except for the twos and threes, so. Okay? And then I have one more, and that is, no, I think that's it, actually. Yep, that is it.
For the computer, is that a replacement, or is it a?
Yeah, yeah.
So one's wearing out, is that it?
Yeah, yeah. And they've already gone through the IT department, and that's where they got their quote, and their quote was actually $1,000 or so. We have bumped that up just in case anything needs to be added or anything like that, and then the money will be in the appropriate account line.
Questions from committee?
Thank you.
Actually, thank you auditor. Actually, I think my question might be more directed towards the city administration, and that was regarding the FEMA grants with the fire department, and perhaps clarification where that might be directed specifically. And I know, I know you're not Andy Stone, Mr. Hetty, but.
That one I'm not familiar with.
Nor the fire chief, so we don't have the information, but we can get it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions are coming?
Just sort of jogs my memory. I'm thinking this had a lot, something to do with the improvement down on Fire Station Two for carbon monoxide removal, the necessary equipment to, and costs associated with installing that equipment.
In the bay?
In the bay.
Okay.
That's what comes to mind, but I could be mistaken, but so.
I believe you're right. It's an exhaust system.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you auditor.
Something about carbon dioxide you just don't want to breathe in the winter, so.
Or ever.
Or summer, yeah.
Mr. Hetty?
I just had one thing to add in regard to computers. The council may see more of those, as you may know, Windows 7 is not going to be supported.
No.
So I think a lot of, a lot of the departments may be upgrading before the end of the year. I know that's something that IT is requesting, so as those computers with the old systems are, may just be replaced instead of being upgraded, or some of them can't be upgraded. Our department will bring some to you here in the not-too-distant future, so.
Don't be surprised then.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I can't tell if Councilmember Reisner was feigning sarcasm or if that was sarcasm.
No. Seven was the best one they ever came up with, another. The world's hopeless, I'm so disappointed. Unless administration has some other appropriations I'm unaware of, I think that's it for Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hetty, for being here as well this evening. Your input is valid and helpful.
Thank you for having me listen.
You can stay if you like.
So that concludes Finance and Personnel Committee, so moving forward to Planning and Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Fall, and I believe is accompanied by Councilmember Grace and Councilmember Crowe. And is that it?
No, I'm not on that committee.
You're not, my apologies.
Reisner McGee.
Reisner, okay, thank you. Reisner McGee. I'm changing everyone's names this evening. Fall and Grace, okay.
Her job is really, really hard, why we made you do it.
Yeah. I'm just giving Councilmember Crowe extra responsibilities that he wasn't prepared for. Thank you.
So tonight, we're going to talk a bit about parking, and Sarah, Grace is taking the head on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Fall. And I just want to bring to committee that I, next week in council, I plan to introduce an ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter V, a couple of sections of that chapter, and the first section is Section 22, which is Pay Parking Rates Regulations and Penalties. And these were recently changed, as we're all aware, when, with the purchase and rolling out of the new parking meters, and council set the parking rates where we have multiple zones. We have high-intensity zones, moderate-intensity zones, and low-intensity zones, and each zone has a separate rate. $1 per hour, 75 cents per hour, and 50 cents per hour. What I am proposing is that we include in the low-intensity zones all accessible parking spaces. Part of the reasoning for the different pricing structures is that those who wish to pay the lower parking rate, 50 cents per hour as opposed to a dollar per hour, can park just a block away and walk. However, individuals with mobility limitations would need to park in the accessible parking spaces. And so I would like to see the accessible parking spaces, regardless of what zone they're in, at the lowest price point, which is the 50 cents per hour. And so Paragraph Three of the section would read, "Low-intensity zones and all accessible on-street parking spaces shall cost 50 cents per hour." And so that is the first change to this title. And then the next one is to Section 25, which is about the time. And for that section, the change would read that provisions relating to on-street parking meters shall not apply on Sundays or holidays or on other days between the hours of 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So this would change enforcement of the parking meter rates from the current eight, until, it goes until 8:00 PM right now, to 7:00 PM. Those are the two changes that I am proposing that we make to this title. Questions?
I would applaud this effort to amend the time limit down to seven. I had asked a question earlier when we were considering raising the time periods to eight o'clock. I asked if this was necessary to pay for the new meters, and I believe the answer was no, so I would even suggest lowering it to six o'clock like it used to be, but I would applaud this as progress, so thank you.
I think one of the things that was trying to be alleviated by the changes in time is the employee parking. I would also maybe suggest the idea that the high-impact, high-intensity areas, which are 20-minute parking to begin with, we may want to look at those going till eight because those are ones right in front of the shops. And one of the reasons why the change was made was because we didn't want those spaces to be filled with employees coming in to park and stuff. So I don't know what the mayor has to say about this, but I know that was one of the chief reasons for it.
I would thank you for that explanation, because I recall that was an issue, but I would also suggest to you, the mayor at the time, the administration at the time, had also indicated that there would be some concession given to employees, perhaps reduced rates or a pass or something in the parking garage that they could use. I believe some of the staff who are paying the higher rates for the longer hours would like to see that come through.
Well, and I don't know where the administration is on those sort of issues with the employers, trying to get more employees to park up in the nicely, freshly painted, beautiful parking garage, which is now so much more cheery and happy. So everybody should go and park there because it's lovely.
Sarah, just want to add that I did have some conversations with the mayor before he left for his conference and travel, and at the time, he indicated support from the administration for changing it to seven, seven o'clock. And I don't know from the perspective of the administration, of course, how complicated it would be, or to have different times, different sections of town. Our uptown area isn't all that large, and I think from a community or user perspective, knowing which spaces are metered until seven and which spaces are metered until eight is a little bit more complex than just having them all the same. But I also know that the mayor was in support of trying to work something out with different uptown businesses to have an agreement for accommodating the employees of the uptown businesses with the long-term parking, or the longer hours, not long-term, but where they can park for longer hours in the parking garage. And I think that needs to be a separate, like that can't be part of the same ordinance.
That's almost, that's an administrative.
Right, and we would need to work.
Thing to do anyway.
To work that out administratively, as far as which businesses are interested and how many spaces could be allocated in that way and what rates could be worked out.
Right.
But I think that is definitely something that we should pursue.
Council is supportive.
I would suggest that, that for ease, for consistency, that both for city administration in terms of programming the parking meters and for the public also to be able to know just the consistent hour, and I think this, you know, moving it back to seven o'clock is a good compromise, so it's a good step.
Okay. Other questions?
Parking is free during city council meetings if we move it to seven, so I expect a huge increase in attendance.
Okay. That's all for this committee. Do you have questions? You get to ask a question.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if you wanted to open it up to other council members or anyone from the audience.
People can always talk.
Yeah. So we have a few audience members that would like to comment on this. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Beth Cladfilter. I live at 35 South Shannon Avenue, and I would like to commend Councilmember Grace for proposing this. I also have been lobbying the city to move the time that the meters are charging back to seven o'clock, because I've been afraid that by charging until eight, it makes people worried about going to dinner uptown or going to a movie at the Athena Cinema. And I think moving the time back to seven o'clock will allow, will allow people to go to a five o'clock movie or a six o'clock dinner without being worried about getting a ticket before they come back. So I'm very glad that this has been proposed, and I do hope it will be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
JD Roman, 12 Northwood Drive. I think it should be at six o'clock. I mean, even though you're moving it to seven, in order to get here in time for the meeting, you still have to pay to park. So here's a public meeting that I still had to pay for, and I will have to pay next time, even if it's seven o'clock. Unless you want people walking late. I should sign this, shouldn't I?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Rob Delak, 124 Morris Avenue. I'd like to commend Council and Councilmember Grace for proposing both these changes. I think a very reasonable change to consider reducing the cost of the handicap spaces, regardless of the zone they're in. That sounds like a good idea to me. In fact, I wouldn't have an issue if it were free for those parking spaces potentially, but I think what you're proposing is a good idea. One thing, I held a, what I'm calling Athens curbside conversations with the county planner back a couple of months ago, after a lot of the parking changes have been proposed and were being implemented, and there's been some controversy about those changes, right? So wanted to have a discussion with the county planner and have folks come and hear what he had to say about that, because the city really didn't have much, much information out about why they were making the changes. There were some discussions here, but it wasn't very public, and there wasn't much information out in the papers even, or things like that. So it was an opportunity for them to talk about what the city thinks and why they were doing, making these changes. And I fully agree with the logic they were using was consistent and the right approach. It does seem like a compromise to reduce the time back to seven makes some sense, and in fact, Paul Logue had said at the time, the city planner had said, that none of this was set in stone, that the city certainly would be willing to adjust if there were good reasons to do so, and so I think this is an example of exactly that happening. So it's, I think, good government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment?
Anyone on council that had not spoken yet?
Okay, that concludes this meeting, committee meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. We are finished and completed with our agenda for the evening. It is on around 7:53 Eastern, what is it, daylight savings time, is that right? Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you. Be safe. Happy Halloween.